Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May 7th, 2024, Tom Water City Council meeting. Uh, we will then start with roll call.
Councilmember Leeta Dahlhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agave.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
And I'm present. Join me in our flag salute. All right, uh, we have, uh, three proclamations this evening. Normally we have two, but this was a busy month, so we have three this evening. Uh, the first proclamation is Bicycle Month and, uh, Councilmember Von Holtz will be reading that.
Proclamation, whereas bicycling is one of the most energy efficient forms of transportation ever invented, and is a mode of transportation well suited to when environments. Sorry. To urban environments where trips are short in length and overly congested, roads are difficult and costly to expand, and whereas transportation accounts for about half of carbon dioxide emissions from fossil fuel in Washington State, which adds to the problem of climate change, and whereas bicycle commuting reduces energy consumption, pollution, and congestion, and whereas bicycling makes people healthier and more productive, prevents chronic diseases through physical activity, improves cardiovascular health, reduces stress, and supports physical, emotional, and mental well-being, and whereas the National Nonprofit Bicycling Safety and Education Association, the League of American Bicycles, bicyclists has declared the month of May to be National Bike Month for each of the last sixty-seven years, and has done so again in 2024, and whereas the city of Tom Water supports healthier alternatives to inefficient drive-alone trips, particularly for travel around the city, by building bicycle facilities and participating in the Will Options Commute Trip Reduction Campaign, and whereas inner-city transit with many sponsors are including local and regional businesses and organizations is hosting the thirty-seventh annual Bicycle Community Challenge during the month of May, 2024. Now therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Tom Water, do proclaim the month of May, 2024 Bicycle Month in the city of Tom Water and in recognition of National Bike Month and Cleaner Clean Air Month. She encourages all residents to put forth their best effort to reduce single occupancy motor vehicle trips to reduce air pollution, energy consumption, and traffic congestion. Signed in the city of Tom Water, Washington, and recognized on the seventh day of May in the year 2024.
Thank you. Um, do we have anyone from the biter bike commuter? I know Duncan Green has like multi- everybody has their council meetings on the same night, so I'm, I'm sure Duncan probably cannot clone himself. Oh, there's Duncan. Welcome Duncan. Go ahead. And I will bring you the proclamation, the paper version of the proclamation.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. So yes, for the record, my name is Duncan Green and I'm here representing Inner City Transit and the Thurston County Bicycle Community Challenge. So thank you, Mayor Sullivan and Council for proclaiming May as Bicycle Month in the city of Tom Water. Uh, since nineteen eighty-eight, the bicycle challenge has been encouraging people to use a bicycle for some of their transportation needs instead of driving. As a result of the recent changes in how we work and commute, we've opened up the challenge to our whole community and for to all reasons for biking to involve more people and encourage them to enjoy the benefit and benefit from all the good things that riding a bike can bring, both individually and as a community. Of course, we hope that recreational riding can open the door for some people to try riding for transportation as well. Bicycling for health and fun is beneficial to individual and community health and well-being, and riding a bike to get around only increases those benefits. Uh, May is also National Bike Month as the proclamation notes, um, and, uh, month-long bicycle community challenges are local celebration along with Bike to Work or Anywhere Day, which we celebrate on Thursday, May sixteenth this year. We'll have six, uh, bike refresher stations in, uh, around the Olympia area with free coffee, treats, bike info, and giveaways from seven to nine AM. And you can find all the information about that and all our other events at bcc.innersitytransit.com. Uh, this year's theme for the BCC is Many Riders, Many Reasons, One Planet, uh, to bring our attention back to the earth under our feet, our diverse community, and our finite global home. Uh, the BCC and all our events are free of charge and everyone is encouraged to participate. We have over forty local and regional sponsors supporting the BCC with everything from donated prize items, discount coupons, and free passes, uh, support for our events and more. So we have lots of great prizes and amazing community support. So it's time to ride in the BCC, the Bicycle Community Challenge, to celebrate our planet and our thirty-seventh year of promoting bicycling in Thurston County. Uh, it's easy to participate as an individual or as a member of a team. Just go to bcc.innersitytransit.com to sign up or log into your existing account if you already have one. Uh, the city of Tom Water has a team in the BCC that you can join if you're not already on it, and, uh, you can feel free to reach out to me at any time. If you have any questions, my email is dgreen@innercitytransit.com. And I'm also happy to answer any questions that you might have now as well. So thanks so much again for proclaiming May as Bike Month in the city of Tom Water.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions? You'll be seeing a lot more information and thank you Duncan, and I will make sure that you get, uh, the paper copy of the proclamation.
All right. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you. All right. Next item is proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week and Councilmember Dahlhoff is going to read it. Are you able to do that since you're a remote? If not, I have a backup.
How is my connection right now? Am I consistent?
Yep.
Let's try, and if something happens, then maybe the backup can finish.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service that provides life-saving and supporting care to the people of Tom Water twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services Team consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Service Teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas the people of the city of Tom Water recognize the need for and initiated a county-wide emergency medical services system since nineteen seventy-four. Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize, honor, and promote the value of the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers in the Thurston County Medic One Emergency Medical Services System by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore Debbie Sullivan, the mayor of the city of Tom Water, does hereby proclaim May nineteenth to the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Tom Water, and she encourages all people to join in this observance to recognize those who give so much of themselves and consistently rise to the challenge for the safety and health of others.
Thank you. And I do see some individuals in our cha- council chambers that, uh, will be accepting this proclamation.
As of right now, unless I get a call. Uh, so thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Sean Kirin's the Operations Chief for Tom Water Fire. Uh, first, I want to introduce, uh, at least a few of our members from Station T1, our headquarters station. So, uh, here we got firefighter, paramedic, and paramedic lieutenant Ryan Winter, firefighter, paramedic Andrew Weinstein, and Battalion Chief, uh, Josh Stewart. Uh, so thanks for having us. Uh, EMS EMS Week recognizes our amazing healthcare professionals, including our, uh, dispatchers with TCOM, our Tom Water EMTs and paramedics, along with, uh, Thurston County Medic One that oversees our EMS program. Uh, it's also their fiftieth anniversary this year as well. Uh, also want to recognize our private ambulance companies, both Olympic and American Medical Response, or AMR, as well as our local hospitals, Providence St. Peters and Capital Medical Center. Uh, for a little bit of data, for two thousand twenty-three, uh, in the city of Tom Water, we ran a total of six thousand one hundred and eighty-three emergency calls, uh, with approximately eighty-five percent of those being EMS calls. And out of those eighty-five percent, approximately the two thousand six hundred and nineteen residents were actually transported to the hospitals either by our crews or the private ambulance companies. Uh, another number I wanted to highlight this, this year was this is our, actually our tenth anniversary of providing compression-only CPR classes to our local middle and high schools for the Tom Water School District. Uh, our Tom Water firefighters have been going out for these ten years and providing, uh, compression-only CPR training to the high schools and businesses, and within that ten-year period, we've, uh, trained well over twenty thousand residents within the city. So again, I want to thank, uh, the mayor and the council member for recognizing EMS EMS Week and happy to answer any questions you may have.
So here is the proclamation. And there's the ones who are able to attend and didn't get put out on the call. Here's, here's a, our pencil. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for all the service, keeping our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next proclamation is going to be Historic Women's Olympic Marathon Trials Celebration Week of May twelfth through the nineteenth of twenty twenty-four. And you will see that Councilmember Swarthout is at the podium, and I will read the proclamation because she is actually on the board for this event. So proclamation, whereas emergency, whoops. Did I pick the right one? Where is it? Oh, I gave him the wrong one. Oh, my goodness. So, all right, hold on, sorry. Uh, that, we only usually have two, so that's why we, uh, there we go. Perfect. Thank you. Uh, whereas on May twelfth nineteen eighty-four, the great Thurston County community successfully hosted the event of the century, the first ever Women's Olympic Marathon Trials, which accumulated in success with three winners to represent the United States in the historic first-ever International Olympic Games Women's Marathon. Whereas prior to the event, for eighty-eight years, women marathoners were explicitly denied the opportunity to compete in the Olympic Games Marathon Events because of discriminated discriminatory views that women were unable or should not compete in marathons in spite of women's frequently doing so throughout the world. Whereas two hundred and thirty-eight outstanding dedicated women marathoners who throughout the United States made history by competing in the event in the Thurston County area, and whereas the event showcased community and regional pride and enthusiasm with participants from over a thousand volunteers from cities of Tom Water, Lacey, Olympia, Thurston County, St. Martin's College, Inner City Transit, state agencies, local business, community, and hundreds of donors of running organizations and more. Whereas joining, uh, Joan Benoit Samuelson placed first in the women's trials on August fifth nineteen eighty-four in the Los Angeles Games in, uh, Olympic, in Los Angeles at the Olympic Games. She triumphed as the first woman marathoner gold medalist in international Olympic game history. Whereas this year marks the fortieth anniversary of the historic event and is being celebrated with a reunion in Olympia at which Joan and fellow US teammates Julie Brown and more than sixty of the original nineteen eighty-four competitors will be in attendance. Now therefore, I Debbie Sullivan, the mayor of the city of Tom Water, on behalf of the Tom Water City Council, do hereby proclaim May twelfth through the nineteenth, twenty twenty-four Historic Women's Olympic Marathon Trials Celebration Week in the city of Tom Water, and encourage all people to participate in the celebration of the history-making achievement and inspired generations of women of all ages to pursue excellence in athletics. So Councilmember Swarthout will be accepting this.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just had a couple of words here. It was, it was a very phenomenal event that they pulled off, and it hasn't happened since that time. Um, the fact that Olympia was awarded this trials, um, it usually goes to bigger cities, but Olympia had such a compelling, um, package that they were chosen, and it was amazing. You can read about it. There's a gentleman, um, named Jerry Lane who wrote a book, and there's a couple of chapters in there that talks about the efforts that, um, Olympia made as far as they'd had like, um, they did crocheted, uh, pillowcases, and then they had, uh, St. Martin's had, um, an Olympic Village set up, and then the transportation and just a number of things. So it was, it was really a big deal, and it really showed how Thurston County and all the jurisdictions had really pulled together. And a part of the race did go through Tom Water, and, um, I'll hopefully get some pictures that we can post on our website, because there are people like sitting on top of the Brewery City Pizza, um, and so we're wondering, and the, uh, the Tom Water Band. So we're wondering, um, who these people are and hopefully maybe get a chance to identify them. So we do have a banquet that's scheduled for Friday evening out at Indian Summer, and if you, uh, sign up, um, buy a ticket, the, the athletes will be there and you'll have a chance, uh, they'll be speaking. And the one that is the most, um, compelling is you have to see, uh, Sister Marion Irvine. She's now ninety-four years old, and at fifty-four, she was the oldest nineteen eighty-four trials participant. And we met her a couple, five years ago, and she's absolutely amazing. So she has really funny stories to share. Um, and so they will also be in the park, uh, will be at Sylvester Park, or, uh, they'll be for the, uh, Cap City Marathon is that, um, also this weekend. And so there's going to be a whole runners event down at, um, Sylvester Park, and so the athletes will be there. And so you can go down and get autographs, and Three Magnus has even, uh, brewed some beer for us. So we even have a special beer that you can purchase for the, for this event. So, um, we're having a lot of fun with it. So I encourage everyone to go.
So here's the proclamation to go give the committee, and you get a pen. Thank you.
Eileen, would you say the dates again?
Uh, this next week, so the, uh, the main event, uh, the dinner will be on May seventeenth, um, at Indian Summer. And then the next day, they will be in Sylvester Park on Saturday, uh, from twelve to five. So, um, they'll be, and again, so that's, those are the events that we'll be able to meet them. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you. Next item is not a proclamation. It is a Transportation Benefit District twenty twenty-three annual report, and Mary Heather Ames will be doing the presentation.
Good evening. All right. Uh, thanks, Melody. So as Mayor Sullivan said, my name is Mary Heather Ames, and I'm here tonight to present the Transportation District Annual Report for twenty twenty-three, which may feel like it's been a while. The Transportation Benefit District. Does it fall asleep? We'll try turning it off and on again. There we go. The Transportation Benefit District is a method to raise revenue for transportation projects. In Tom Water, our TBD is funded by sales tax and was established by voter approval in September of two thousand fourteen. Collection began after a special vote in two thousand fifteen, and I mention this because you may note that we are coming up on the ten-year anniversary of the formation of the TBD. When established, the TBD had a separate governing board called the Tom Water Transportation Benefit District Board. Then City Council was able to take on the governance of the funds in November of two thousand fifteen. The TBD exists to preserve and maintain city-street infrastructure. RCW requires the preparation and issuance of an annual report that covers the financial and construction details of the previous year. This report has been prepared, and I will be looking for your agreement to release this report. We got a lot done in twenty twenty-three. Uh, we did planning work that included, uh, looking forward, also doing some pavement condition ratings so that we make decisions on how to spend the money that is based in data and not necessarily just the feelings of, um, of our staff. We also did design work, uh, Israel Road and Linderson Way pedestrian and bicycle improvements, a project that is physically close to where we are now, um, was designed, and then also Linwood Avenue Sidewalk, uh, Susitna Lane to Second Avenue. That project, uh, is, both of these projects are actually are funded by grant funds using TBD as match. So we're able to take the Transportation Benefit District money and make it have a even larger impact by using it as match for these projects. We also did a big construction project. That was the twenty twenty-three maintenance, pavement maintenance project, which is basically paving and striping. So what you really want is to see the pictures, of course, and I have to admit, they're not super exciting because they did such a good job. There's, there's pavement and there's striping, and it's smooth and nice to to drive on. So, well, we have a few different, uh, views, and, and these, uh, we're able, using the data that we have from the pavement rating, we're able to, um, target the money to where it will be most effective and and make our, uh, streets last as long as possible. So this is not, we don't, uh, necessarily focus on a specific area. We actually look for a specific condition of streets in order to spend that money wisely. So these are spread throughout our city. Um, luckily, we're a small enough city that that works contractor isn't really having to go here and there. If we were, um, maybe like a county, we would probably focus on local areas. So looking forward, uh, as long as we're talking about the TBD, um, in twenty twenty-four, uh, the TBD will support two pedestrian and bicycle-focused projects. I mentioned them already. The one on Israel Road and Linderson Way and the other on Linwood Avenue. Uh, then next year, we're looking to a paving project, which it does the paving and the striping. And then, um, the paving portion of the Second Avenue pedestrian and bicycle improvements. And that project is another one where we were able to use TBD as match to receive grant funding. Um, and that one's fairly, a fairly large project. It's in roughly the three million total with two million of grant and one million of, um, TBD. So pretty exciting and big things are coming. The report, this, you have, um, the full size in your packet, and it will be, assuming you agree, it will be available on our website and, um, to members of the public, but this is what it looks like this year. Um, it has some of those pictures and, and a couple others that I didn't include tonight. Whoops. Well, no formal action is needed. Uh, however, I do ask that you consider giving me the go-ahead to release this information. We will post it on our website, as I said, and then, uh, release to the newspapers in accordance with statute.
Any questions? Councilmember Swarthout?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I can't believe it's been ten years already. I remember campaigning for this and so, um, this to happen. So it's hard to believe it's already been ten years and how much has been accomplished, um, under, in those ten years. Um, so I was wondering about the map that shows who's going to get, uh, worked on this year. So.
Ah, well, and this year we don't have a large paving project. This year we just have those two, uh, bike ped-focused projects, the Israel and, and the Linwood. Um, so we're developing the map for the twenty-five using that pavement rating data that we collected last year to be able to say this is the sweet spot for his pavement. And forgive me, little tiny nerding out, um, pavement is not necessarily wisest to address worst first. There's actually a point at which, um, if we can keep a pavement going well, it will last much longer than if we spend all our money rebuilding very poor streets. So for paving, we go for that sweet spot, and then we design other projects if there are some that are in that worst condition that is a specific to that location to bring it back up to speed. So. Anyhow, that was more info than you needed, I think.
I'll watch for it in twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Great. So any other questions? No, with that, so we just need to approve this. Does this take a motion then to approve? Uh, so do I hear a motion to approve the Transportation Benefit District twenty twenty-three, uh, annual report? So moved? Right. It's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Agave. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Mary Heather. All right, next item is public comment, and at this time, we're going to receive public comment. You may comment on any item related to Sydney business that is not for the public hearing, which we have a public hearing this evening, and the signup sheet was available in the back. Uh, when I call your name, please come to the podium, speak in the microphone, state your name and your address for the record. Uh, each, uh, speaker will be limited to one three-minute period for their remarks, regardless of the number of topics, and, uh, all comments shall be direct, uh, shall be directed to, towards the council as a whole and not to individual council members and not to members of the audience, and we always request that no disruptive behavior. So, uh, with that, I will start with the first, um, public hearing. Um, Pamela Hanson, if you could come to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council and Mayor. Pamela Hanson, uh, PO Box one four five two one, Tom Water, Washington. And tonight I would like to talk about, uh, item E on the consent calendar. It is the Integrated Planning Grant for the DOT Capitol Boulevard property. Um, it was be, uh, beginning at page forty of two hundred and fifty-eight pages of the City Council Packet. Uh, the agreement, if I read it correctly, is for two hundred thousand dollars, and it begins no earlier than May eighth and ends no later than June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, I have stated my opinion before about what I would like to see there. Um, and that's the fire department and the police department. I think it's a great location. It's right next to the freeway. Um, so they have, um, access to every direction from there compared to here, uh, to get somewhere in a hurry. Um, all other kinds of details that can be talked about if that option is included in this study. But the most important thing, I think, is the pollution aspect of those fuel tanks, their DOT. Um, I was there when the upper part of the fuel tanks were taken out. Um, I'd have to go back through my pictures because I took an abundance of pictures and talked to the people that were removing them and talked to them about the tanks and the tank status, which it would take longer than three minutes here. Um, so in this service provider agreement, I think that there should be a built-in redundancy of information to reinforce an audit of the source information when the agreement is completed. Um, in other words, the success of an independent review depends on the quality of the fuel tank diagrams, testing leakage, pollution, cleanup data, and In other words, the success of an independent review depends on the quality of the fuel tank diagrams, testing leakage, pollution cleanup data and projections. Because I think most of us that have grown up in this town really care about the water source, and that's what we're talking about, basically. If that's a single wall tank that has been in there for an extended length of time or however long it was, that's important information. My background is my dad installed a lot of fuel tanks, including one at the airport around the sixties. So what he told me in his shop when I was in my teens was that some of the fuel tanks that were delivered to his sites when he was building part of the Seven Sisters Fuel Tank Stations, so Chevron Shell, Union Seventy-Six. Those tanks arrived and they weren't reinforced and the dipstick was too long. So it's as simple as that. Thank you. Yeah, but I think that data should be very, very well researched so that it can be audited and corroborated and double-checked.
Thank you. All right, I only had one individual signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to sign up for or speak for public comment? Okay, with that, we will move to the consent calendar is, do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Von Holtz and seconded by Councilmember Althouser. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, we have approved the consent calendar, and this consists of minutes from the April sixteenth city council meeting, minutes from the April twenty-third city council work session, payment vouchers, resolution number R twenty twenty-four dash oh one zero, surplus property. Also, finance provider agreement with Haley and Aldridge for the Integration Plan Grant for the DOT Capitol Boulevard property and the Brewmaster House renovation contract change number two. So all of those items were approved with the consent agenda. Next, we are going to go to a public, have a public hearing, and I want to open the public hearing, and we will now conduct a public hearing on ordinance oh twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two, the budget amendments number two. There, there was a signup sheet which I have, and we will, once the staff is done doing the presentation, I will call those individuals forward. And there will be, following the report, there will be the testimony. And so Troy, are you going to go ahead and do the presentation on the, on this? So.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So a couple weeks ago at the council work session, we went into a pretty in-depth presentation about the budget amendment that's in front of you for tonight. This will be a slightly pared down version of that. And you'll recall, we talked about our new ERP system, making the, it has extra budget controls in it that our old system did not. So there were some areas that we didn't budget for as well as we should have in the past. The new system makes us do better. So that's a big part of this, and the biggest piece of that is the lot sewer revenues and expenditures. So as you know, we collect lot fees from our customers, and then we remit that money to lot. And in the system, we didn't budget enough money. So it's, it's pretty much a wash in the end, but we need to fix the budget for the system. A couple of the things in the utility departments, we have a couple electric vehicle upgrades we'd like to do that cost about twenty thousand each. Also in utilities, the new office space at South Peterstown Community College needs a little bit more money to finish that, furnishings and things like that, and they'd also like to hire a couple of interns. Another piece of the budget amendment that we talked about was wage compression issues, and so you can see by the chart here that the nonrepresented labor groups have been, have been outpaced by the represented labor groups over the years. The problem that causes for the city is some of the supervisors, a lot of the high level supervisors are nonrepresented. So pretty soon, we have staff making more money than their supervisor. So this is a small piece of it for now, and we'll address the bigger issue in the biennial budget. That's about a fifty-three thousand dollar impact to the general fund and just a little bit to each utility. Also, in this budget amendment, we have a little bit more money to finish the fire kitchen remodel and replace the the rotting wood sign out in front of City Hall. We talked last time about the flock camera system. We decided to pull that from this amendment to give us more time to talk about it. It really wasn't ready to be implemented. We didn't have a contract yet anyway. We were just trying to be proactive and use some restricted funds that we had available. But we can pick this up at another time. In the Parks Department, the Special Recreations Program, this is another one where our system is going to make us budget better. We, we would spend money on these programs and then be reimbursed by grants, and so in the past, we just didn't budget real well for that. So we will fix that with this amendment and do better going forward. Also not in the original budget was a solar powered EV charging station at Pioneer Park. This was a grant that we applied for, and we were awarded the project, so. We need the budget authority to, to make that purchase and install it, and then we'll get reimbursed for most of that cost. So the grand total for all funds, we have new revenue largely from lot of about four point nine million dollars, expenses of four point four. So that's actually a net budget decrease in the end. And in the general fund in particular, about two hundred and forty thousand, and you see these crossouts on the presentation, that's, that's removing the flock camera system. So about two hundred and forty thousand in the general fund in expenses and a hundred and two thousand in revenues for a net increase of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And so with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions before I open up the public comment portion? Hold on, Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, so what is the recreation special?
That's kind of a special parks fund that we have. There's a specific grant that we get money for, and it's only about thirty thousand dollars a year, but it's, I believe it serves lower income park attendees for, I shouldn't say what it's for, I would be guessing. That's more of a check Denny question, but yeah, it helps pay, pay the fees for, for park programs for people that can't afford it, I believe, and then we get reimbursed later.
Okay, so is, is, is the issue we're not getting reimbursed or we're not spending that funding?
No, the issue with this is, this is one of those, the new, our new computer system, financial system. In the past, it was just, it was known that we would spend some money and then we would get paid back, and it's a hundred percent reimbursement. And so we just didn't do a good job of, we didn't really put any effort trying to, trying to estimate what that would be. We just, we knew it would be a wash in the end, and so we didn't really do anything with it. And this goes back years and years.
Okay.
And with the, with the new system, we can't do that. If we spend more money than is budgeted, it's a, it's a hard stop, and it won't let us go any further.
Okay.
So that's why we need to do better at those.
I do. So in pulling the automatic license that we have blocking cameras, did we do that because we were in, in trying to be proactive, we didn't seek impetus from council or the public? Is that why we're pulling it?
Uh, we're, yeah, we're pulling it. There were some current concerns relayed to us about privacy and things like that. And so, and, and we weren't really, again, we weren't really ready to go forward with it anyway. We were still negotiating a contract. So that contract, if, if that goes forward, the contract will have to come before council for approval, and we can, we can adjust the budget at that time.
So if you're saying contract, there ought to be a discussion for before a contract. So you pulled it. My question was, was it pulled because there was no discussion, or was it pulled because you wanted to talk about the contract first? Which is, what, what is it? Contract or discussion?
It's, it's not a simple answer, but I'll do my best. So this, this actually went to the Public Health and Safety Committee, I think in December of two thousand twenty-three. And there was a kind of a nod of approval to, to, to proceed with the project. However, the, the contract negotiations have been slow, and there's not a contract ready to bring to council. In addition to that, some council members have raised concerns about there was an article in the ACLU that talked, talked about the flock cameras, and so again, we weren't, we weren't ready to go forward, but we knew it was that it could be coming, so we're just trying to be proactive and tie up some restricted funds to use for it. So given, given the concerns from the council and given the fact that we don't even have a contract ready yet, we decided it was just easiest to table it for now.
Okay, so I want to be on record in saying that the meeting in December was not a discussion, because I was a member, I was there. It was just an FYI. So even when the item is brought up for a discussion or whatever, there ought to be a discussion for us before we talk about contract. It's not contracted, then discussion. It's discussion and then contract. If, if that's what we, what we want to do.
So with that, I will open up public comment portion of opening public comment. I do have one person signed up, and I'm thinking that Ryan Reynolds, did you want to speak to the public comment? Come to the podium, state the name and address for the record. Thank you.
Ryan Reynolds, nine zero two zero Blomberg Street, Southwest. I'm here, represent Tumwater Chamber of Commerce. I'm president, acting president, and I came earlier because I wanted to give a little bit of progress on where we're at and remind Chamber and City of Tumwater on upcoming event with the Tumwater Education Foundation and Tumwater Rotary that we are putting together for scholarships for students here at Tumwater High School and Black Hills High School. And a side note, I know we're not supposed to do this, but I want to say how impressive it is seeing all these kids here, listening to what's going on, and it's easy to lose faith in what we see on the news and TV. And this right here is a great testament for the City of Tumwater, and thank you guys for providing the table for this.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on, so come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor, for asking. Pamela Hanson, P O Box one four five two one, Tumwater, Washington. I would just like to comment about the flock cameras, too. I know city budget is different than state budget. I had my own budget when I was at the Property Tax Division, just a small one for support staff and support services. So I appreciate what Mr. Neil Meyer said about addressing this later if city council wants to and to put it in the budget as far as a contract. I don't know if I summarized that correctly close enough. I personally see a need in the community for those cameras, for any camera that the Police Department or the Fire Department wants. Stolen plates are one concern. And also, I have seen at least one vehicle in my lifetime without a back plate, and the plate is on the front of the car. So there are some pretty disruptive licensed vehicle owners that don't want their plate red for one reason or another, and that's just my thoughts on that. I support the flock cameras for the Police Department and also a public hearing possibly to find out who would disagree with it and what potential lawsuit might be filed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? All right, with that, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and then move forward with any council considerations. Councilmember Althouser.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have any questions. I guess my comments are brief, too. When we do these budget amendments, these things are all pretty accounting-based rather than making concrete policy choices. I think it makes sense that the flock cameras is not included in here because clearly some folks want to have a more thorough debate about the policy of that. So I think it makes sense, and everything in the budget, we see some, some larger numbers on the screen, but again, that's mostly to shore up the books for the end of the year. So I, I don't have any concerns and fully endorse our adoption of this ordinance. And with that, I would move to adopt ordinance number oh two zero two four dash zero zero two, budget amendment number two.
I second.
He has been moved by Councilmember Althouser, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion? Hey, with that, oh, Councilmember Dahoff?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, in alignment with Michael, Councilmember Althouser, I fully support and I appreciate pulling the flock system for discussion, and I also appreciate being proactive. And I would hope moving forward with that proactive stance is that the time we've taken and the staff have taken to research body worn cameras and the, how that would fit potentially in Tumwater also aligned with the technology, the flock system and those discussions, right? And then if funding from Prop One could be used with that. So I'd love to see that moving forward, just technology as a whole for law enforcement moving forward, and I'm in total support of this amendment. Thank you.
Right. Any other comments? All right, with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
All right, next is council considerations, and we have the two thousand twenty-four Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Funding Recommendations, and Brad Mudrude will be doing the presentation.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Just a moment as we have the presentation up. Excellent. Oh, actually, try control. All right, tonight, I would like to present the recommendation from the Budget and Finance Committee regarding the Tumwater share of the Community Development Block Grant Funds that we receive every three years. Pursuant to an interlocal agreement, Tumwater shares are funding on a three-year rotation with South Thurston County jurisdictions and the City of Lacey. The City of Olympia has its own entitlement fund from HUD and is not part of that rotation. We've received funds every three years since two thousand fifteen, and we contract with the Thurston County staff to manage the RFP process and also the administration of the funds and the grants. On that three-year cycle, we have RFPs that are issued for a variety of projects. Similar to what was done in two thousand eighteen and twenty-one, the city council decided to focus the grant dollars on affordable housing capital projects and also housing services. The, ten of the funds obviously is to benefit low and moderate income persons in our designated census tracts, which occupy a good portion of the city. Because an RFP was chosen for all of the funds, the city's council role tonight is to provide a recommendation that will ultimately go to the Thurston County Board of Commissioners about how the funds will be allocated this year. As I mentioned, the Thurston County Public Health and Social Services Staff administer the RFP. We received ten total applications. Four applications were for affordable housing capital projects, and six were for public service projects. The Budget and Finance Committee met on April twenty-third and interviewed each of the applicants and made a recommendation that I'll be presenting to the council tonight. As a note on the fiscal side, up until this morning at nine thirteen, we didn't know the actual amount that Friday was going to give us. Now we do know. So this is hot news. Uh, so this is hot news off the press. Uh, the amount has been determined by, uh, HUD and was, has been passed generally over a million dollars. Uh, the breakdown is Thurston County will retain 20% of that total to cover their administrative costs. Uh, of the remaining 80%, uh, 15% of that goes to the total uh, social services and the remainder is that can be designated towards capital projects, in this case for affordable housing. Uh, there are also some additional rules that cover eligible capital costs that we don't need to go into tonight. Uh, the breakdown that we received this morning, uh, was that the city will be receiving as part of the grant funds, one million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars of total funds. Of that breakdown, the 20% county administration amount is slightly more than 245,000. Uh, the 15% for public service projects is slightly more than 184,000. And the 65% that's allocated towards affordable housing, slightly under 800,000. Sure.
Hold on. Okay, go ahead.
So from three years ago, is, did that total go down or is it the same?
Uh, as I quickly go through the staff report to answer your question, I believe it has actually gone up slightly.
Okay.
And I apologize because I don't have that instant. Uh, actually, it's very similar.
Okay.
It's almost, almost exactly similar.
Okay.
To what we received in 21.
All right. Thank you.
So for the capital project applications, we received four applications. Uh, the first one was from Homes First and it was for a major rehabilitation project uh, in the city of Tumwater to create, uh, housing for low income, clean and sober housing. That's the other clientele that will be served by the house. Uh, rebuilding together Thurston County, uh, asked for funds to provide for critical home rehabilitation program, uh, their program. The difference between Homes First and the rebuilding together program, well, Homes First focuses on one particular project. Rebuilding Together focuses on the smaller repairs. The South Peaches Sound Habitat for Humanity Critical Home Repair Project focuses on the larger, uh, home repairs. So for, for example, rebuilding together may do things like accessibility, uh, things like, you know, installing bar handles, bars and so forth within the house, ramps and so forth. Well, South Peaches Sound Habitat for Humanity will be focusing on the larger things like replacing a water heater and those kinds of things. Uh, South Peaches Sound Habitat for Humanity also, uh, asked for additional dollars to cover the townhomes buy down project that is, uh, currently under construction in the city. In addition to that, uh, there were six service project applications. Uh, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Thurston County uh, requested funds for, uh, scholarships to support youth. The Catholic Community Services asked for funds to support their community kitchen. Uh, Family Education Support Services, uh, asked for funds to support the peer recovery specialist program. Uh, Senior Services for South Sound asked for, uh, funding to help them with their home share program for the elders and seniors in the community. Thurston County Food Bank, for the first time, applied for a, uh, an application through the, this process uh, for home delivery and other bank activities and support of the community. And then finally, Together, uh, applied for an application to support their work in the Tacoma Community Schools. The discussion on the Budget and Finance Committee, uh, focused on three criteria while evaluating the applications. Number one, the conceptual soundness of the project, the financial feasibility of the project, and lastly, uh, the applicants demonstrated ability to implement the project and comply with the program requirements. Because there was more money requested for both of these types of projects than was available from HUD, uh, the Budget and Finance Committee allocated potential total funds to each of the projects, uh, at a slightly reduced amount for some cases and other cases, they were able to award the full amount that was requested. In addition, because we didn't know the final HUD allocation at the time of the meeting, uh, the Budget and Finance Committee decided on contingencies, uh, what would happen if we didn't have enough funds or we've had too many, uh, too many dollars, uh, more than what we'd allocated. So the allocations then for the capital project funding recommendations from the committee were, uh, Homes First had requested $375,000. The committee recommendation was 245,000, which actually matches what the budget in a dent, which was identified within the RFP, uh, of what they were intending to spend the dollars for. In the case of, uh, rebuilding together, uh, the requested amount was part of the recommendation for 75,000. For Habitat Humanities Critical Home Repair Program, uh, also the, the committee recommended the amount that was requested for 45,000. And the amount for the South Peaches Sound Habitat for Humanity Town Home Buy Down Program, uh, was the one that was adjusted up or down because it was intended to support families as they were coming in. So it could vary depending upon the number of families and so forth. So the recommendation initially, um, was lower. What you see in red is based on the actual numbers we received this morning. It's different from what you have in your staff report. Uh, so the recommendation was 434,057 dollars and 35 cents. Uh, again, it's slightly less than 800,000, uh, and it's about 20% of the, the total request that we received for these projects. Uh, the contingencies, as I mentioned, because the final allocation was more than 780,000, uh, we adjusted the funds for the town, the townhome buy down program upwards, uh, to capture that additional amount, I think was about 19,000 dollars. And then there's also a second contingency, if the funds for the, uh, Homes First Major Rehabilitation Program, uh, and Silver Housing Program and, and the rebuilding together program and the, and the humanity, Habitat for Humanity Critical Home Repair Programs are not used within the time allocated. Those funds in turn would be allocated to the townhomes buy down program. Now that's an issue because we have received notice from the county on our last 2021 uh, allocation process that there are still funds outstanding. We are been, I'm sure that we'll be able to spend them within the time, uh, allocated, but we wanted to make sure that we have this as a backup just in case. On the service project allocations, uh, there was far more, uh, funding requests than there was available funding. Uh, so that meant that the allocations were reduced for the most part across the board. Boys and Girls Club requested about $55,000 and the recommendation is to spend, uh, 40,000 of the dollars on that particular program. Because the size of the Catholic Community Service Project was $3,200 or approximately that, uh, the recommendation was to keep it at that because of such of the small size of the project. Uh, for the Peer Recovery Specialists for Family Education Support Services, uh, the funding request was 58,000, the, the recommendation was just under 32,000. South Sound Senior Services Home Share Program asked for 23,000, 15,000 is the recommendation. Uh, for the Food Bank, because it was a new program and because it served a larger population outside of the city, uh, in addition to city residents, uh, the recommendation from the Budget and Finance Committee, would they be funded at 30,000 out of the 100,000 they requested? And then finally, Together was, uh, had requested 100,000. The recommendation was to fund them uh, at 64,700, 397 dollars and 85 cents. That again, takes into account the additional funds that we know we were going to have now, uh, from HUD. In addition, there were some contingencies on this. Uh, the, because we thought we only had 180,000, uh, we've, now we know we have slightly more. We've allocated the, those additional dollars, about $4,000 to the, the Together project.
I, I see councilmember Kathy. Kathy, did you, councilmember Kathy, did you have a question now or did you want to wait until after the presentation?
I just wanted to ask a question real quick back on the, um, yeah, the chart feature showed, um, I understand, I'm, I'm looking at number five, the Thurston County Food Bank, and I understand the home delivery is new and it does have some delivery outside the area, but the other bank is not new. And it, it, it took it over from 15 years of the Y W C A, as people know. And there is an urgent need in this community for hygiene project, products, meaning personal hygiene, especially for women, but also for men. Uh, and also the other thing in great need for, that's included in that is cleaning products. So people can keep their homes um, or their children, and their selves, uh, clean and so forth. So this is, this is a really important thing. And so I know that you lowered it because mostly because of the home delivery. And I just wanted to put in a, a thought or where some other money might come from to raise that and maybe do some specification on, um, what they're receiving for designate for the home, for, for the other bank. I don't know how they wrote the, um, their request, but if that would be possible, I would like it to be looked at again and considered or check with them or something to we need it.
Thank you, councilmember Kathy.
I can't hear you. What, what was the response?
I apologize. I said, thank you, councilmember Kathy.
Thank you for pointing that out or just thank you for what you said and.
I was trying to have a very smooth transition from your comment going back to the presentation and I failed. So we could take this up tomorrow morning at general government if you'd like.
I didn't mean to create a big fear here. I, I was just advocating for for a great need in the community. So sorry, Brad. I didn't need to throw you off.
Oh, no, no problem. Thank you.
Okay.
So the recommendation for the Budget and Finance Committee, uh, is that the city council approve the city's, uh, 2024 Community Development Block Grant Award Recommendation and send that recommendation on to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Uh, and then the process following that will be the Thurston County Public Health and Social Service staff will be setting up the public hearing, uh, presenting the draft plan to the commissioners and then submitting the plan to HUD for their approval. Uh, the selection of the city projects are recommendations again that go to the commissioners for final authority because Thurston County is a legal entity who will be receiving the funds from HUD as part of this process. So a quick timeline of the next steps in the process, after the council approves award recommendations, uh, the annual action plan will be posted for public review and public comment on the 17th. Uh, the public hearing has been scheduled with the Board of County Commissioners for June 18. Uh, it's expected that Thurston County will be sending conditional award letters to the agencies uh, by the end of June, and then hopefully by September, October, uh, we'll be getting contracts after we get the notification from HUD. The contracts again will be issued by Thurston County. Any questions?
Um, I.
Councilmember Jefferson?
Um, thank you, Brad. I see the vast need out there for services. It's almost like no one fully got what they wanted. And it's distressing for me to see the home share program. Um, our seniors are homeless on our streets. I very much dislike to see that that program is receiving half of what they requested because I know the need is going up and they probably need 10 times as much as that $17,000 that they're getting. Is HUD aware that this money that we're receiving is a simple drop in the bucket? Are we letting our representatives know that this is an emergency? We need so much more money. How can we fully fund home share at least back to where it was three years ago?
Brad is looking through his papers. So it, I will just say as chair of the, this committee, there's so much need and there's just a limited amount of funds and you just have to figure out where is the most fair way of doing it? And where there are shortfalls, we need to look at other funding sources to fill those gaps of the shortfalls. We only get this once every three years. And hopefully that continues in the future. We'll even be getting less than this in the future. So um, it's kind of one of those things that we do as much as we can with what we get. And it's, uh, those are the hard decisions that the, the budget committee has to make when, when we do the interview process. So hopefully I, I hear exactly what you're saying and there's so much need.
This is scary. And that's the reason why, you know, our home, homeless population is just exploding. You know, we have people with jobs, houseless, living in vehicles.
Yeah.
The need is so vast. It's just, it's just scary.
Uh, I'll go to councilmember Kathy and then councilmember Dahlhoff, and then I'll do in chambers. So go ahead, councilmember Kathy.
Oh, thank you. I hear what you're saying too, Angela. One thing that heartens me is we did a good job of funding um, the rebuilding together, which keeps seniors in their homes. I know many seniors that have been helped by that group and able to, um, you know, keep the maintenance and the things up on their home or get their ramps or whatever and be able to stay. But, um, I, I hear what you're saying too. It's, and I hear what Debbie's saying, you know, we get it every three years and spreading it out. But, back to my comment the first time, so um, I don't want to vote on this tonight until I know, can we, can, can, what, what happens if like I'm saying, I think that more of this money that we're giving, of the amount we're giving to uh, the, the food bank? Um, since we didn't want to fund so much of the, of the delivery, can we put more i- into the um, the other bank? By voting for this tonight, but just shifting the money around in that same category? Or is there any possibility? I mean, I, I don't want to, really don't want to not vote for the whole thing, but I don't want to close that door.
So what do you, what are you suggesting that we discuss where we take from and where we move it to? Because we only have a certain amount of funds. That's it. And so we would then have to determine where we took other funds from and make it balance.
Well, maybe you could explain to me a, a, as a, as a committee, when you looked at that and saw that, that it was a new program, those you, those two programs are tied together under the food bank. And the only one you made the comment on was that you felt you shouldn't give all of what they asked because of a new program and partially outside of Thurston County. Then what about the other bank? Can, can either some of the money that you said you didn't want to use? All I'm trying to do is, is get more money for the other bank and have that stipulated because there's two asks there in that one thing. And I don't know how you handled that.
Councilmember Althouser wanted to speak to that.
Yeah. And, and I, I just wanted to say two things. First was to sort of articulate some of the criteria in addition to what we discussed with it being a new program. In terms of the universe of all these different programs that we had before us, i- there is not a single program that applied for funding where if we awarded 100% of that, it would not result in like lives being improved. All of these programs were incredibly meritorious. And I want to second um, the mayor's comments about how, um, much of a challenge it was to try to whittle it down. And some of the criteria we looked at, um, for all of these programs is also like, are the services that are being offered specific to, um, populations that exclusively reside in Tumwater, which is why if you look at the percentage, the percentage that we awarded to Together and the percentage we awarded to the Boys and Girls Club and the Peer Support Recovery Specialists is higher than some of the other ones. To get to your question, councilmember Kathy, the way I see it, we have three options as a, as a body, well, maybe four. But, um, first, these recommendations could be adopted as they are presented. Uh, to get to your specific point about the other bank and the delivery program, I, I think that we could probably also adopt it as it's presented with a caveat that perhaps 50% of that $30,000 be dedicated to delivery and 50% of that be dedicated to the other bank. I think we would probably have to talk to the food bank to. I think we would probably have to talk to the food bank to make sure that that's allowable and also the county to make sure that that's administrable. So if we did do a motion along those lines, I think we should also include a contingency that says if that's not doable, then something else would happen in the event of that. And then I suppose the third option would be to not take action tonight in lieu of getting additional information, but that would present challenges for our timeline and working with the county. So in, in my opinion, the third option would be not ideal. So that, that sort of, is, is that what you're, I, okay. And then the potential fourth option is that we take money from another organization from the recommendations and shift it. That's the other thing we could do. We could take $5,000 from here and put it there.
The City Administrator Parks had a comment, so hold on.
So, can I make one clarification, Councilmember Kathy? The, the application from the food bank or the other bank? The, the, the application from the food bank was for the home delivery program to include other bank type items that are currently in those packages that would be part of the delivery program. If I believe, if I'm correct, and I've got people looking this up, they currently don't have an other bank program facility in Tumwater. So their application was to actually propose to provide the home delivery and to include other bank items in that delivery program. So the application didn't separate those things into separate buckets. Their proposal was to do home delivery and to provide other bank items in the, that home delivery program as opposed to, because they didn't have an other bank facility in the city of Tumwater.
So I don't understand the other facility piece that you're, that you're talking about. I'm, 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 what I'm saying is, well, okay, well, if, if this other bank money was only going to be used, was only going to be used for the delivery program, is that what you're saying?
Yes, it was, it was a single application for a single thing that included both food bank items and other bank items. As it was explained in the presentation, they, they have multiple food banks throughout the county. They only have two other bank physical locations. So this money was an application for money, for both the, for the delivery program to include both food bank as well as other bank items. So it, it was not, we want, we want so much money for home delivery and then we want so much money for other bank, our other bank facility. That was not the application, if that makes sense.
That, that makes sense. Yeah, I, I understand that. And we, we gave them less, I can't, I'm not looking at the numbers now, but considerably less or whatever than they asked for. And do I have the reasons correct? Because it's new and because it's, it's not exclusively enough Tumwater? Are those the two reasons?
Correct. One of the other things that's been very challenging this year in comparison to the previous three allocations is this year we had six applications come in for services and in previous years we had at most four. Number two, and going back to Councilmember Jefferson's question about the difference between the 21 funds and the 24 funds, because it's essentially the same as the $21, it doesn't account for inflation and rising costs. So actually, we were effectively receiving less funds than we did in previous years based on inflation. So that makes it even more challenging, I think, to try to, try to fund and allocate fairly across all the different requests.
All right. Councilmember Kathy, that answered your question.
Sadly, I, I think that we need to think about investing when we're thinking about the poor, we're thinking about education and we're thinking about, you know, economics and people getting jobs or being able to go to jobs. We, this whole idea of, you know, hygiene and cleaning supplies is, is a part of the puzzle that is really important, so.
And this probably would be a future thing to discuss with the Thurston County.
Yeah, I think it's a future thing to discuss. I, I'm, I'm okay with the explanation. I think, I think you did a good job, so.
Great. Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things with this coming up is I don't want to lose, when we distributed Human Services Fund, I think it was, is we're at 13,000 or 15,000 and we talked about for the next biennium, moving it to 20,000, this would be a good conversation of those other applicants, right? And if those projects would align with Human Services. In addition, in this biennium budget, we also have a new line item for senior protections. We got $25,000 for repairs. Could this be an ongoing discussion? We talked about rent stabilization or the home share concept. Could that then be added in the next biennium for senior protections? So that's the thing, I don't want to miss that. All valid, difficult situation. I appreciate what was presented and, you know, playing with the numbers, right? To have everyone a little bit uncomfortable, but everyone still have enough to move forward to serve our community. And I think we have an opportunity with Senior Protections line item in our budget to talk about seniors and housing for that home share component. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion from Councilmembers for that?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. It was a struggle and I appreciate Brad pointing out because in 2021, we had the four programs and we had the Boys and Girls Club and the Catholic Community, the Kitchen, the Senior Services and the Together Program. And back in 21, the Catholic Kitchen asked for more money than they did this year. And so we had two new programs come in that the total was $158,000 when we had $180,000 to distribute. And so it was a struggle and we talked about our values and what, and we didn't want to hurt the programs that we have already been working with and with our, our Together, with our, our, our kids. And, and then with Senior Services too, it, we gave them a little bit more money than we gave them in 2021. So on the, the, the home share program, we were able to do that. But it's with those two new ones coming in, it was really a struggle to divide the pie up without hurting the programs that we have been supporting in the past. So that's how it came down.
So do you want to be on that committee again next year, Eileen? Committee for many years and every, every year, that same, you know, council pushes back and, and you all weep. So it, it's because we know how much there is to do and it, it just doesn't go that far. But thanks for that. I can, I can, I can feel it.
Councilmember Oldhouse.
Yeah, I, I wish we had to do this process every year because we, we only get to do it once every three years, right? Um, if we got to do it every year, we'd be pushing out another million dollars into the community every year, which would be amazing. But it sort of feels like we're kind of coming to the conclusion of the, the discussion and with that, but if there are additional comments, feel free. But with that, I would move that we approve the city's 2024 Community Development Block Grant Award Recommendations to the Thurston County Board of Commissioners based on the Budget and Finance Committee's funding recommendation at their April 23, 2024 meeting.
I second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Oldhouse or seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any further discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Great, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. All right. With that, we will now go to the Service Provider Agreement with Haley and Aldrich for the Brownfield Assessment EPA Grant. Uh, and Mike Matlock will be doing that presentation.
Thank you, Your Honor. This item is to authorize the mayor to sign the Service Provider Agreement with Haley and Aldrich for the EPA Brownfields Community Assessment Grant. This grant will enable work to inventory and assess environmental contaminants in, in, and set the stage for further work to clean up and redevelop these properties. The focus will be on the brewery district and also on, which will include the priority sites of the Knoll and the brewery properties and the Valley where the, and the Valley properties where the warehouses are currently. And also on the now vacant Washington State Department of Transportation building on Capitol Boulevard. Work will also include a robust capital, excuse me, public involvement plan that will keep property owners, stakeholders and residents involved in what's going on. It will include Phase One and Two environmental analyses. This will give us a really good idea of the extent of any contaminants there and where they are. And it will help to also develop site-specific cleanup plans for the property. And also remediation and reuse of selected parts of the properties as well. So it's a fairly comprehensive grant. This is a half a million dollar grant and it's a nationally competitive grant. So we're very pleased to receive this. Successful outcome of this work will be setting the stage really for further remediation and planning work in the future to get to a point where the properties are in a redevelopment condition. We published a RFQ for this project and we received six applicants and an inter- internal staff review team reviewed all those six applicants and came to a consensus and we hired, recommend hiring Haley and Aldrich for that work. In a minute, I'd like to turn this over to Julie Wuk, I'm trying to mispronounce your name, Wukalik. I was, I was on a roll and then, and Jim Maul. Both Julie and Jim are from Haley and Aldrich. I'd like to have them provide some more details for all of you on this project. Before I do that, I'd like to have staff recommend you authorize the mayor to sign this service, service provider agreement for this project and then answer any questions you might have.
Any questions before presentation? Councilmember Oldhouse.
This is one of those times where I ask a question that I already know the answer to, but there, there's.
Hopefully I will too.
There's no local match to the grant, correct? It's.
There is no match.
$100,000.
Right.
All right. Welcome.
Yeah, I don't have a formal, we don't have a formal presentation. Just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you for, you know, appreciate selecting us for this really important project and our team. And just tell us a little bit about, briefly about us and really, really then talk about some of the details and what our next steps and plans are, what has already started and, and we're really looking forward to working with everybody in, you know, going the next step and getting these properties back into action and working with everybody. Yes, I'm with Haley and Aldrich. We're a firm of, been around for a while. We've been in the Northwest area for 50 years now. We're, we have 35 offices across the country. We were formerly Art Krauser. And but the, the most, and we have lots of technical expertise helping that, but really importantly, we have assembled a team of real experts to implement these, the grants. And you'll hear from Jim Maul here, who's the Gemini Environmental Strategies and he's really one of our key members in his strategic thinking and leveraging these grants into more potential opportunities and helping us get to the point of revitalizing, revitalizing these properties. And I've been with the company for 35 years. I'll be the, I'm a principal, I'll be the principal in charge. I did want to say that Yen V. Van is the project manager. She really wanted to be here. She felt so bad, but she's driving to Montana for her daughter's graduation. So she asked me to relay to everybody, thanks and appreciates this opportunity. So with that, I just could tell a little bit, a little bit, uh, first steps, I'm turning over to Jim because he's, he's a big, he's a big thinker and really is one of the best in really making things happen and gathering the folks together. So, and I'm on the technical side of things too. And I think importantly is doing a lot of the, you know, planning and collaborating and bringing the, and getting the stakeholders together in confirming what priorities are and, you know, building off the data that we already have. And then so he'll get into some of the details, but we're doing some pre-planning and we're going to have some workshops with key members of the community, public involvement, some of our real estate strategists. And again, kind of confirming the priorities and, and, and just some priorities and next steps we got to go. And then, you know, with the, in the brewery district, there's a lot of information out there already, there's, but there's still some data gaps in which we've got to gather some more data and that's where we will be putting together work plans, sampling analysis plans, et cetera, that EPA has to, under the EPA Brownfield Grant, we'll have to review and approve, but we're doing that. And then we want to get out there into those brewery properties and do some additional soil and groundwater sampling and analysis to fill in those data gaps. And then, you know, from there, then we, we'll also be working on some site inventories of, within the district of, you know, contaminated properties that we'll bring to the table too. And then Jim will talk more about, on the, our other integrated planning grant of some of the things we'll do there. With that, Jim, do you take it over? Thank you.
Mayor Sullivan, Council, City Administrator Parks. My name is Jim Maul and as Julie indicated, I'm the owner of Gemini Environmental Strategies. I have just a, I, I'm the, I'm the sole person working for that company. I started environmental consulting a little over 40 years ago. And if you'll indulge me for a moment, I'll give you a little bit of my own personal history in this business. I, I have a degree in geology and a minor in math and I was, came from a blue collar background and got a job in, you know, doing, as an applied hydrogeologist. And that led to doing investigations of hazardous waste sites and cleanup projects and, and I was just in technical nirvana and that was what I was all about in the early part of my career. Investigations, collecting data and working to clean up the properties and it was remediation. And I had the good fortune of working on a project that was a big landfill in Southern Oregon, city of Grants Pass. The landfill was ordered to close in two years, leaving the city in a terrible situation, no place to take its garbage. They had to completely redo their solid waste plans and it was going to be a superfund site going on, you know, becoming a, a superfund site and all of the problems associated with that. And it would have put the city in a terrible situation. And, you know, I was a technical guy, but we developed a solution that led to the landfill being able to continue to operate and taking the proceeds from the landfill operations and using those proceeds to pay for the environmental cleanup that needed to be conducted and upgrading the landfill to the modern technical specifications. That moved, that was a, a kind of a watershed moment in my career, understanding the impact that finding a solution to these problems had for this community. Fast forward, I had the incredible good fortune of kind of orienting much of my career around helping communities find solutions for problems associated with environmental blight, the loss of jobs, you know, when the Olympia Brewery shut down. You not only lost jobs, you, you, the, the, a tremendous impact to the, the city's economy, but it's also, it impacts the community, that the identity of the community is taken away in a way. And so we get to work to help you restore that and it's such an honor. And I, I can't tell you how much satisfaction it, it gives me personally, and I know our entire team is extraordinarily excited about the opportunity to work on this project. So what we've done is we've kind of identified a through line on this grant, on both of these grants. We're going to look to leverage both of them to the maximum extent possible, limit the city's risk and maximize your return on investment by, we take a begin, begin with the end in mind approach. So we want to understand what does the city define as success relative to the endpoint of this, these grants? That will be the focus of our first workshop is really understanding how you define success relative to the brewery properties, the Wash Dot property, the. The Wash Dot property, the redevelopment of these properties. And then the connecting that with the, um. Capitol Boulevard corridor and finding opportunities to revitalize. Properties within that corridor and looking at it from a triple bottom line approach where. The environmental cure actually leads to, uh, improved economy. And, uh, restores that, uh, those really positive benefits that. Uh, you know, kind of via a vital. Brewery district will have on the community. So with that. Any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you. I am super excited about this. The one question I had, um, that maybe we can follow up later. Is just regarding PFAS. I know that ecology has a different definition than EPA. And there's been going back and forth regarding subcategories or the whole suite. What is your threshold as you're going to identify, you know, contaminants? Um, are you doing like federal definition or state definitions?
That's a good question. And you know, the, um, the regulation of PFAS is. And, and you know, other types of emerging contaminants is still in some ways in its infancy. And so the typical default would be the most conservative of the two. Start with that. And then we do, we have a process where we actually then look at the potential for, um. Uh, threats that these chemicals pose based upon potential exposure routes, the risk assessment techniques. And the relevance of the chemicals relative to the environmental media.
Awesome. Thank you for that answer.
Councilmember Jefferson.
Um, yes, thank you for that. That was impressive. Um, like Councilmember Dahlhoff, I'm, I'm excited too. It sounds like you know your mission and I'm looking forward to your updates. So thank you so much.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And I am looking forward to a motion. Do I have a taker?
Got it. I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the service provider agreement with Haley and Aldrich.
Also.
All right. I think it was Councilmember, uh, Jefferson moved and Councilmember Von Holtz, uh, second. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Unanously approved and thank you very much and looking forward to, uh, a very wonderful relationship. Thank you. All right. With that, we move to committee reports. Uh, and the first committee report is Public Health and Safety, Councilmember Agabi.
So Public Health and Safety, um, meeting is next week, next Tuesday on the 14th.
Okay. Sorry, let me get this. Next one is General Government Committee, Councilmember Althouser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee has not met since our previous meeting, but we are meeting tomorrow morning. And we have a number of items we'll be going over. We'll be discussing an MOU with the cities of Lacey, Olympia and Yelm. Uh, for a housing displacement and racially disparate impact analysis for our housing element for 2025 comp plan updates. We'll also be going over a data sharing agreement with the state auditor's office. In fact, actually two data sharing agreements with the state auditor's office. Uh, we'll also get, um, be discussing an amendment to the Enterprise Resource Planning System contract. That'll be our second amendment. That's our finance system that we've been implementing over the past couple of years. And we'll also be discussing, um, creation of a new fund, uh, the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund, which is just for receipt of revenues for the new. Public Safety Sales Tax that was passed by the voters.
Great. Thank you. Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We will be meeting on Thursday, May 9th at 8:00 AM. Uh, on our agenda, we will be discussing the, uh, we have a resolution on the six-year transportation improvement program. We have a resolution, uh, for the Percival Creek Fish Passage Barrier Removal. The Palermo, uh, Superfund Project Update and Flood Pains by Design Application Update.
Thank you. Uh, and then that with the Budget and Finance Committee, we have, uh, dealt with that in our meeting this evening. Uh, we will be having another Budget and Finance Committee meeting, uh, and that one has not been scheduled yet. So with that, we will move to Mayor City Administrator Report. And so Administrator Parks will go ahead and start.
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilmember, Members Swarthout, I appreciate your difficulty with fish passage barrier. Uh, my partner is a hydraulics engineer who works on fish passage projects. And we often have difficulty having those conversations. I just have a couple of quick updates today. The, I wanted to share with you that our water resources program has done it again. Uh, the Department of Commerce State, um, the Home Electrification and Appliance Rebate Program. Uh, we've been awarded $447,540. Uh, we will be negotiating a scope of work with the, um, Department of Commerce and bringing back the, uh, grand award to council for that. Essentially what that will do, it was, it will provide 30 to 35 full cost rebates for low to moderate income households to electrify their homes. Uh, some of the projects that would be, um, eligible would include installation of heat pumps, induction stoves, heat pump water heaters. Heat pump clothes drivers, dryers and electric panel and wiring upgrades that, uh, provide, um. A, a better, uh, electricity to their electrical equipment. Um, this is part of the 2024 regional initiative that was developed by the Thurston, uh, Climate Action Plan. And so we're super, super happy to have been notified of that, uh, today. Uh, secondly, I just wanted to remind you, we, we had an email come in from our very own Mr. John Doane. Um, he has worked with the Sumner community to put together a tour for us. Of their Gordon Family YMCA facility. That's a partnership between the city of Sumner. And the YMCA there to provide not only a YMCA facility, but a community center. And so he's worked with, uh, the people that currently run that facility to provide, um, a tour for us on May 20th. Um, at 6:00 PM. If you could please let Brittany know for sure, one way or the other, if you plan to attend. Uh, we also have extended an invite to that tour to the Parks Commission and we're going to be. Uh, hopefully gathering names of those who will be attending there. And I believe John has also invited. Some of the city of Olympia recreation staff to attend as well. So looking forward to that and just asking for your, um. Affirmation or, uh, one way or the other with, um, Brittany as to whether or not you'll be able to attend that event. And then lastly, uh, just to let you know, the May 14th work session, we have a very big agenda. Uh, we're going to be doing another series in our municipal finance 201. Uh, educational conversation, this time talking about expenditures. Um, we're also going to be talking about a new medic, uh, unit proposal that's coming from, um. Uh, the Thurston County Medic One. And then we also are going to have a brief discussion and an update to the council on both the proposed Parks Ordinance Amendments. As well as the, an update and a briefing on the Gary Oak Tree, the Davis Meeker Gary Oak Tree out at the airport. And that's all I have unless there are questions.
Any questions? I don't see any. All right. So for my report, uh. I had attended two intercity transit authority board meetings since our last, uh. Since our last council meeting and, um, a lot of, a lot of it was introducing new staff. Uh, this particular, this Friday, we're going to have our retreat. So some of the discussion was. Prepping for our retreat that we'll be having on Friday. And I'm sure through, uh, social media, everyone has seen that intercity transit, uh, again. For the bus rodeo, uh, has, uh, done amazingly well in winning the best international driver. Uh, is our driver in, uh, Olympia for intercity transit. And our team, uh, tech team took, uh, first place in, um, in, uh, one of the maintenance competitions. So with those scores, that provided intercity transit then again, first place international rodeo champion. So it's, and they're competing against some of the largest, uh, transit systems in the United States. So it's, it's pretty impressive that our system is able to, uh, do that amount of amazing work. Um. I also want to thank staff for a great Earth Day Arbor Day, uh, celebration. There was a lot of things that were done. And, uh, and so that was a really good, um. Uh, event. And the only thing I want to, else I want to add is just on a personal note. I attended former Councilmember Judy Hoeflein's memorial service today, which was very moving. Uh, it was held today even though she passed away earlier this year. Uh, she was, they chose to do it today because today would have been her 85th birthday. So. Uh, and it also gave family who, um, are not in the area time to also travel. So. So that was, uh, uh, definitely something. I, I, um. Sat in her particular council seat for eight years, which I always felt as an honor. So. Uh, with that, I will move to council, uh, reports. And if you don't mind, I'll start in, um, in Zoom land. Uh, Councilmember Kathy.
I gotta get out of this Zoom land. I'm always first. I have, uh, not attended any meetings since our last, I don't think. Yes, I did. Usually Councilmember. Excuse me, Althouser, reports on the. We, we've had, God, we, we've, we've had a regional housing council, haven't we, Michael?
I don't think we've met since our last council meeting because we, I think we briefed it on it that last one. Cause our schedule is a little funky. We're meeting tomorrow. So that's why.
That's it.
That's why we're a little funky this month.
Yeah, it was the change that I was, messed me up. Getting too old for change. Um. I, uh, will start in my meeting schedule sort of tomorrow with, at 8:00 AM with the. With my friends and. With general government and then I have a, uh, an Orca meeting, Olympic Region Clean Air. Authority and, um. So I don't have anything else to report as far as meetings are concerned. We answered lots of emails and gotten calls and so forth. Because of all of the interesting things we're doing here. That's all I'll say. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Kathy. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Washington State Office of Public Defense's, uh, Budget Development Listening Session. Which was very interesting, uh, the challenges that they're experiencing in that office, right? We contract with them for those services. So that's going to be interesting in their budget development. I attended a lot retreat. We're talking about the future of Lacey Olympia, Tom Water Thurston County Clean Water Alliance. What does that look like for septic conversions, affordable housing units? We, there's a priority to expand those, to keep those going and figuring out a funding source for that. Thurston County 911 met, still working on permitting for two towers. You remember. In 2018, we voted to increase one tenth of one percent to replace the radio system. So four years later, still looking at developing two towers. And then the Thurston County Opioid Response Task Force met, the prevention work group. And the highlight for that is regarding looking at safe storage of medicine. So what would that look like for the cleanup drop off event at Tom Water? What does that look like for first responders with all the gear that they have on their vehicles? If they come to sites or they're dealing with a call, um, is there an opportunity for first responders to pass out safe storage? Locks of medicine or for vapes or for other substances. So that was one of the questions that I think. Thurston County is going to be following up with, uh, local jurisdictions, the law, law enforcement. Fire EMS and seeing if there's an opportunity there collecting some data on what they're seeing regarding unsafe. Storage of medicine. And that's it.
Thank you. Yeah. Councilmembers, forth out.
Uh, Councilmember Dahlhoff, I have a question about the 911. So. You're saying, have they purchased, uh, radios yet or is that still a work in progress?
All the radios have been given out training. It's the two towers for the coverage of the radios. One with Thurston County and one at JBL app.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Swarthout, your report.
And now I am up. Thank you, Mayor. So I attended the, uh, climate committee meeting on April 22nd, uh, the executive committee meeting. And we, uh, approved the charter for, um. We updated it from nicely 21 to, uh, the 2024. So we updated that. And we also had, um, um, information from the, uh, Community Advisory Work Group summary. And I just want to say, wow, this is really a great thing to get this, um, the grant from, uh, Commerce. Because we, when we're doing our jurisdictional sharing, uh, Lacy's. Has been able to receive these funds and they've already gone through theirs and same thing with, um, Olympia. So it's really nice to be able to, to have these funds and make them available, uh, for retrofitting, uh, these homes that really need to be retrofitted. Um, and then I attended the, uh, Budget and Finance Committee meeting on April 23rd. And then last but not least, uh, I had a TRPC meeting on May 3rd. Uh, the first part of the meeting is we had executive session where, um, we went over, uh, reviewed the executive, uh, director's evaluation. And then, uh, we had a presentation on the 2024 call for projects. Uh, there's $19 million out there that in a federal grant funding for projects spanning federal fiscal years 2025 and 2030. So, um, they'll be evaluated and then they'll go through, um, the TAC committee, which is, are the advisors. And then, um, there'll be a public review process of that as well. And then the TPB will get a chance to take a look at it and then it'll finally come back to TRPC. So we're looking at, um, projects that are shovel ready basically. So, um. Be able to use these funds. And, and then we also received, uh, an update on congestion management and, uh, as far as congestion in our local roads.
Thank you. Councilmember Althouser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Like I said earlier, the region, regional housing council hasn't met since our last council meeting, but we are meeting tomorrow. Um, similar to some of the work we approved earlier about our CDBG funds, uh, that meeting tomorrow will encompass some of our funding recommendations. For housing and homelessness services as well as for affordable housing services and hazardous weather services. So that's an annual process that we go through, um, where we'll be making those recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners tomorrow. We'll also be appointing, uh, a new member to one of our advisory committees, which means that the city of Tom Water will be fully represented for our quota of Tom Water residents. On both the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee as well as the Homeless Services Advisory Committee, which is exciting. Uh, beyond that, uh, the Funding Governance Work Group for the Deschutes Estuary Project has not met, but, uh, is scheduled to meet on May 20th. For our next check-in about, uh, language for the draft ILA that we hope to bring to council before the end of the year. And, uh, I think that that concludes it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Agabi.
So on the 24th of February, I attended the, um, EDC, um. Board meeting. Here at the, at the New Market Skills Center. So. Living in the area, you know, the building is there, but you don't really know what it does or how, what goes on in there. So. I had the opportunity of having the, uh, listening to the, um, to the, to the director, Matt Ishler. Actually tell us what the skills center does and how that intersect with, uh, the city of Tom Water, which was a very, very good thing. So at the, uh, meeting, we discussed a whole bunch of, uh, issues, starting with the, uh. Budget for 2023, which EDC has retained, uh, an auditing firm that will be conducting that budget. Going forward. And then I also last, my last report in April, I talked about the, uh, the new, um. The newer entities that's going to be formed, that EDC is hoping to form between, between, uh, Thurston County, Mason, Grace Harbor and Pacific County. And that, uh, entity will be, uh, will be called the Charlotte Pacific Economic, uh, Economic Development District. So by August, that, uh, this should be functional currently. Currently, we're working, uh, they're working on the bylaws and uh operational uh policies and uh any other items that go to the formation of that entity. So over at the uh EDC meeting on the twenty-fourth, we discussed um Tom Water Build Development uh redevelopment site briefly. And we talked about the Regional Athletic Center in Lacey Phase Two, the Public Facility District, Small Business Credit Initiative and JSCOM Animal Services. So JSCOM Animal Services came up because somebody had mentioned that um that, no, if you guys are aware that uh JSCOM, the uh, the Sheriff Department uh towards the end of last year. So normally JSCOM has a booklet, receipt booklet that they will issue for citations. So folks that are, are annoying compliance when they go out to do their uh, their investigations. Uh, towards the end of last year, they were running short of this booklet and as the county, they have the county sheriff to give them a booklet. And then uh, that was not forthcoming. And because that was not forthcoming, it became an issue. That it's a, it's a broader issue which goes to um what has been happening. The county either will have to take over those services or have the sheriff give uh JSCOM this booklet. So thus far, I don't know what the outcome will be, other than the county is going to have to do something. So that's where that just, JSCOM uh Animal Services discussion came up. And then moving on with the EDC uh meeting, um there is an entity within EDC that is called the South Thurston Economic Development Initiative. They have submitted a, a grant for ninety-nine thousand five hundred to the USDA Rural Economic Development Office. And today we were talking about the um needs in the community, about our food bank and delivery and, and, and stuff like that. So part of this grant would be as a pilot project to build capacity for organizations to serve their communities at a higher sustainable level. So in terms of uh bringing the food bank to power or having a deliveries more equitable, some of this grant will work towards accomplishing that. And then um, there was other host of uh leverages here and there, but other than that, that was the course of our, what we discussed. So tomorrow at seven thirty, I have a, a meeting for the EDC Transportation Board. And then I believe on the eighth on the night is the JSCOM meeting that is uh coming up. And on the fourteen is the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting that is also coming up. That is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Jefferson?
Um, yes, on the twenty-fifth of April, I had the EMS meeting where we discussed our updated bylaws changes and forwarded it to the county commissioners for uh approval. Also, we readjusted our budget to address the levy lid lift error um, which occurred last year. And the county is involved with that discussion. The highlight of the meeting was, we had a briefing on the Thurston County Medic One's new eighth medic unit. Now, there was an extensive study done all over the county and it was determined that the new eighth medic unit will be located in Tom Water Fire Station Two. So for about two years, um, we've been hearing that our ALS response time is decreasing. The threshold for urban is ten minutes, suburban twenty minutes and thirty minutes for rural. Our population is exploding in the county. Um, the suburban response time of ninety, ninety-five percent is good. Our problem is our, our urban response time is now ninety percent and we don't want to wait to implement to eighty-five percent, which is a threshold. So now is the time for us to plan for this eighth unit. This way we can be ready in approximately two years and that is all I have.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Von Holtz?
Uh, I have not attended any meetings since our last get-together. Um, but we decided last month at our meeting that we would be meeting bi-monthly for a little bit now, so my next meeting with them will be in June. And I will be attending tomorrow um the Thurston County Chambers Annual Meeting celebrating their one hundred and fiftieth celebration.
Thank you. Is there any other business this evening? All right, with that, we are adjourned, everyone. Thank you.